... of years in the future, we don't have to make it part of this, is that correct?
Correct. The way this is drafted is essentially says that the terms are, Keaton, if you can scroll down a little bit, or scroll up, I guess I should say, or whatever, scroll down in the document, I'm sorry. You're right. Now stop there. Stop there. Yeah. To serve, so the line of, ordered by the Board of Trustees to serve for such terms established by the Board of Trustees. So, and, you know, you could do that by resolution rather than having to amend the law.
Okay.
So, you know, I think that just gives the Village Board a little bit more flexibility to decide what the best term lengths might be, if in the future, I mean, as said, and as was mentioned, work session, and Basil, you know, you probably know better than anybody, having been involved in Village Government, probably longer than anybody else here, that, that it has been the practice of the Village for Planning Board members to serve three-year terms, apparently as far back as anybody can remember. But if you wanted it to be...
Okay, so I have a question. So in this you have, which shall consist of, and you crossed off seven to five members.
Right.
So, but, you know, I'm, we obviously, you know, we're still, we still have a public hearing open on this, so there hasn't actually been an official vote by the Village Board as to whether or not the majority of the Board wants to downsize from seven to five.
Right.
How would this affect this for our next meeting, our May meeting, our second?
Well, assuming we close the public hearing at this point, or the Village Board may want to keep it open to get more, it's really up to you guys. You know, I believe, my recollection that the March 9th meeting is that everybody who spoke at that public hearing was opposed to the reduction from seven to five, but that, you know, again, it's certainly within your authority to do that if the majority of the Village Board wants. If they don't, if the majority of the Village Board wants to keep it at seven, we just wouldn't make that change. But if you're good with the rest of the changes, I would essentially just clean this up, so that it would be ready to be consistent with what the intent of the majority of the Board is, and then you can vote on it at your next meeting.
Right. Yeah, so that, that's what I, that's what I just wanted to understand, and I'm fine, Ben, with closing this public hearing tonight unless anyone else on the Board has an objection to that.
I don't. Yeah, I think, I just wanted to clarify, I think, you know, for the, the public currently, it was that the, the term has never been correct. So as long as Village Record, you know, I think, Chip, you kind of alluded to that, basically asking Basil, but, you know, we're just making it in black and white now because the state says it should have been a seven-year term, and we've not been really doing that. We didn't have a way of showing that we ever superseded it.
Yeah, the latter. I mean, as I said, I don't know for a fact that, that the Village never did supersede, but, but...
We can't, we haven't been able to locate.
Right, so we just want to make it clear. And as, again, I think nobody's ever, it's never been an issue, to my knowledge, I mean, the Planning Board members have all served those terms of those length, and the, in a number of Village Board has, Boards have used that, those terms. But what this would allow you to do is to use, continue using that, or if you want to change it in the future to something else, there was some discussion at work session about maybe four-year terms, or whatever, and/or maybe you want them staggered a little bit differently, this just gives you a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, and I think too, I think we were also concerned if we, if we followed the state law of seven years, we may have a hard time finding volunteers who are willing to give up seven years for a term. So I think that's what we, that's kind of, I just want to make sure that those who are here tonight, that's kind of the overall big picture of this, right?
Right, and, and just as you all know, I think I also, you know, I did discuss this issue with, with NICOM, who's the New York Conference of Mayors, statewide organization that represents cities and villages, and they also, you know, the General Counsel there to think that the seven-year, you know, that's a really problematic, and it's a really long term, in that, that nobody really wants terms of that, of that length.
But that's, but that's a separate discussion anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, we do, we probably do have some members who have served well over seven years, because some of those have been on there before I was on the Village Board, but...
Sure, yeah, yeah, for sure.
There are people who would, if we said, oh, there's a seven-year term, I, I think some people would be, you know, reluctant to join a Board that's a seven-year term. So we're trying to be realistic, I guess.
It's a good way to describe it.
Okay, so then what will happen unless anyone has objections to close this public hearing? We have no one commenting on it tonight. I would make a motion to close it this evening. We would vote as a Board as to whether or not we are going to downsize from seven to five members, or just leave it at seven, and...
At our next meeting.
At our next meeting, which is, right, May 26. So are there any more Board comments then, since there's no public comments on this?
I guess, the question I have, yeah, that's fine to go ahead and close, but the question I guess I have for Chip is that, tonight, do we need to take a straw poll vote as far as where we stand as far as the numbers? Because we don't want to not adopt the other changes that are in here.
You, you can, but you don't have to. I mean, the, the, the public hearing is going to have a record. You guys can make a decision based on that record. You don't necessarily, I mean, you just need to tell me what you, what you want to find a lot of say, that you can either do that tonight, or, or not tonight. You know, the vote on the law, however it's drafted, will certainly occur at, you know, a, a regular meeting, but there's no legal requirement that you take a straw vote to determine how you want me to draft this thing.
Okay.
But if you want to, that's fine.
Right, because if it's going to be different...
If you guys are ready, let me put it to you this way. If you guys are ready to do that, I think that's absolutely fine. If anybody wants to think about it a little bit more, that's fine too.
No, I'm ready to give an opinion on that.
I'm ready to give an opinion also.
Basil, Matt?
I, I'm, I, I would just say, I'll, I'll second Deb's resolution. Keep it moving.
Matt or John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, of, I can keep it moving. I mean, let's just think that because of the way we're doing this, the people who might want to weigh in have not been able to weigh in.
Right. So, I mean, for me, like, I mean, I'd, I'd just say, it's like, I think we should keep it a seven-member Board, but I do want to have the other change. So my thought is, is we should go ahead and at least know, I think publicly, that if we're gonna, are we going with five or seven tonight, and then let this float out there as it should be for the next, you know, two weeks before we actually vote on it, so the public, you know, knows where we're headed.
Yeah, so, I mean, initially, you know, I was the one who brought up this discussion about doing what I feel has, would be a rightsizing of the Board. We have five members on the Village Board. I don't see any reason for a village our size to have seven members on a planning board. I think five is just much more manageable, and as we've seen, even in the past year, we have had evenings where getting a quorum at a planning board meeting has been an issue. So with all of that in mind, and also coupled with the fact that since I used to be liaison to the planning board when I first came on the Village Board as a trustee, I have always felt that the planning board was too big, that we should only have a five-member planning board. However, when we opened up the public hearing on March 9th, everyone who spoke on this subject was in, did not agree with that, and felt that we should leave the planning board at seven members. And there, there were some very good reasons, I thought, given for that. And I will just say that, you know, being an elected official, my, my role here, I feel, is very important to represent what I hear, feedback, especially at public hearings, because for me, what's the point of having a public hearing if you're not going to really take that and weigh it considerably in your decision?
Right.
So with all of that being said, I am now in favor of keeping a seven-member planning board.
Yes, I think for me, the, the question becomes is, if, if we as a Board feel that we want to keep it at seven, we make the other changes, then should we continue this? Because maybe there were people who didn't show up to the public hearing because we're downsizing, but if we're going to keep it at seven, maybe there are people who's, who are on the other side of that, but maybe they had their chance to basically support it at the time. I don't know, I just, that's the question I guess I have.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that's a fair question, Al, but again, you're not required to keep public hearings open at multiple meetings. I mean, there, there was clear what the, the intent of the laws originally drafted and advertised for was. So I, you, again, you can do that, but I think that, that's bending over backwards, I, I think, to make sure that you haven't heard from everybody what, again, it's fine to do if you want to, but nobody can really be heard to complain. If there was a public hearing on that issue, everyone who had an opportunity to speak on it, and if the Village Board listened to the majority of those people and decided to go in a different direction, that's fine, you know, it's...
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't see a need after this evening to keep this public hearing open. I think that, you know, I would like to make the motion to close the public hearing with the thought that at our next meeting, which is May 26, this Board votes on whether or not you want to keep a planning board at seven members, or you want to take it to five members. And I think it's just, it's, it's cleaning things up in a timely manner, because we are, and we will still have our reorganization in July, and I think we have a date on that already, Judy. It was on our meeting calendar, July 11th, was it, maybe? I don't know, I looked at it briefly. I saw there was a date that was already on the calendar. So I'm just trying to keep things moving along.
Yeah, no, I don't want to slow things down. I just want to, I just want to make sure that we were clear, that it, it seems like maybe we've got a majority that we're probably going to keep it at seven, but we do all, I think, agree that we want to change, that we can set the term and ratify that, because that's part of this as well, right, Chip?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will have this on the agenda then for a resolution and a vote for the May 26 meeting.
Do we want, do we want the draft to reflect five or seven, or are we going to just make that decision then?
Well, I spoke, Al and I both spoke for seven. If anyone else, if we get a third for seven, that's the majority. So is there anyone else who is in favor of seven?
Basil, John?
Oh, I'm done.
You're not in favor of seven, okay?
Correct.
I have to, I'm withholding my, my opinion, because I have to. So I am saying...
Okay, John, that leaves you.
Yeah, no, I think, like you were saying, Deb, how at the public hearing, everyone did, I mean, it was all members of the planning board that were speaking, and they all spoke in favor of having seven. So if everyone on that Board says seven is okay, I mean, I think, you know, as long as they can get there, get enough people there for the meetings to hear the public, then, I mean, I think keeping it at seven's fine, because if, if that group wants it seven, then, I mean, kind of let them say what they want, so.
Well, so if we do, if we're doing a straw vote, then that's three for seven. So I would recommend that resolution being drafted as such.
Yeah, so that's no problem. I will then clean this up to, to eliminate that change, but leave all the rest of the changes, and that'll be ready for vote the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Chip.
Okay, so let's move on to public hearing number two, which is, I will make a motion to open that, and it is for the continuation of the March 9th, 2020 public hearing on excessive offensive lighting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, we, when we initially opened this public hearing on March 9th, we had one resident, Amy Alexander, who came and spoke about this amendment to our code, and I followed up with Amy today because when she spoke, it sounded like we had maybe missed a couple of things that she wanted us to consider. So I just want to go through this with the Board and get everyone's input as to what their thoughts are on this, and then I think once we have that, we can have Chip redraft this law, and I think then we can probably move forward with it. So the first comment that I had about adding, and I, and I'm referring to East Aurora's lighting code because it's, it's pretty, it, it covers everything, it seems. So the one thing that we had talked about adding was that lighting fixtures would not be able to produce a glare for drivers, pedestrians, property owners. So here's an example. So there are areas in the Village where if you're driving down a street, sometimes spotlights are being triggered to go on. So in order to cover that, to make sure that that isn't an issue, that would be an addition to this lighting code. And Chip, just for your reference, it's from the East Aurora lighting code. It's under general requirements, 165.4, and it's letter G.
Okay.
So is there anybody who would be opposed to having it so light fixtures don't produce glares for drivers or pedestrians when they're going by property?
Well, basically, that's only part of it, right? The other part is...
Yeah, there's, there's a few more additions, yeah, but that's just one more point.
Okay.
The other, the other thing that we talked about were the usage of neon and laser lights, blinking, flashing, moving. It's only, would be acceptable for temporary seasonal displays, and that's from 165.7, letter B in the East Aurora code.
All right, so I know, we, we already have in our MU lighting standards, I mean, there's, you know, so that...
I thought there was something in there that doesn't even allow neon lights for businesses.
Yeah, so it's like planning board approval, but yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so, be, because, you know, one of the differences between this law, you know, and one of the reasons I believe the Village wanted this is because we weren't, really weren't regulated. We, Village regulates pretty strictly, I would say, commercial lighting in the MU districts, and even in the multifamily residential districts, because those are the three with design standards that have pretty extensive lighting regulations. But we really don't have any lighting regulations with respect to residential districts. So the, when this was originally drafted, it was intended to, you know, although it wasn't specifically limited to residential, it was supposed to be of general applicability, it really was meant to sort of fill that gap. But i- if we start getting into those issues, I, I do think we need to look a little bit more closely at what the, the existing design standards have to say about those things, because we don't want to create conflicts.
Okay, so this may, this may be too specific then, and I, I guess what you initially drafted was more of like an umbrella policy almost. It just was intended to kind of cover things in a pretty normal manner.
Right, I mean, it was just supposed to be a, a general anti-nuance lighting type of provision that could be applied to any property in the Village, whether it be residential, or commercial, or mixed use in nature. Whereas the lighting standards in the NMU, MU, and R3M design standards, as I said, they're very prescriptive. I mean, they, they're, they're very clear about what lighting standards you have to meet. We don't apply that in, you know, outside those districts. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, like you said, it's sort of an umbrella to catch really obnoxious lighting, where it's not otherwise regulated, but it, it's, it's difficult to imagine that you could have lighting in the MU, in any of the design district, design standard districts that would, that would run afoul of that offensive lighting provision. So I, I'm just not, again, as I say, we, we could do, we just need to be careful that we don't, though, create confusion or conflicts between these sections, because as Al, like, it may already be that we don't even allow...
Like neon is specifically prohibited in MU, for instance, but that would be just in MU. I mean, I guess my question is, in these two clauses here that we're looking at, you know, I mean, shielded or aim to eliminate unnecessary illumination and to ensure that there's no glare, light pollution, light trespass onto adjacent property. I mean, wouldn't that, wouldn't that include your first clause about the spotlights with cars going past?
Yeah, it would, it would, okay.
And then, I mean, the holiday lighting thing, again, if you, if you, I mean, if you're aiming the laser light at your house, and it goes afoul, then you, you run amok of these, these clauses as well, and you go re-aim the laser light.
Okay. Okay, yeah, good point. And that's, I just, you know, I just wanted to bring these points up for discussion with the Board. So I think that, that gives further clarification about where we're heading with this, and, you know, if that's the case, I think for now, I'm good with the proposed offensive lighting law that we all see, you know, up here on the screen, unless, and if, and if there are, you know, tweaks or additions that we feel that this isn't covering down the road, we can certainly, you know, amend it. So if everyone is okay with this, I'm going to just open the floor to see if there's any public comment on this law tonight, and if not, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, and we will also vote on this at the May 26 meeting.
We have at least one person who would like to speak on this, Jordan Abrams.
Yeah, okay, great.
Hey, Deb, and the rest of the Board, Jordan Abrams, 130 Milton Street. I just had a comment on section B, just thinking about, like, that you're supposed to have a flag illuminated if it's up overnight. So like, a lot of people have those small spotlights that are pointing straight at the sky at the flag, that's, I could think of one example on, on Milton, and I can think of another one on Pasadena right now, where somebody has a flag hanging from their front porch, or on a flagpole in their front yard, and I think, like, I don't know, federal standards or something, say that if you have the flag up overnight, you should have it illuminated. Not looking to create a bunch of, you know, extra work or whatever, but just an efficient way of, of dealing with that specifically.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, I think, you know, the whole, you know, if I'm looking at B, those, those lights are typically, you know, up vertically, right? So if I'm looking at B, it's talking about a light source being emitted horizontally.
Well, it says it shall not be, it should not be emitted above horizontally, basically up to 80 degrees, but not, but not flat, and not above that. I, I mean, I think to Jordan's point, there is, there's a little weird gray area there. I mean, I guess...
Well, doesn't, doesn't a federal guideline trump a Village guideline anywhere?
I don't know. I'm just trying to keep it, you know, people do uplighting in their front yard. There's a word for it. It's called uplighting, right? And some of it looks really, really, really nice, and I don't know, I can think of a bunch of examples. If I take a walk down my street of people who paid a landscaper to do very tasteful, non-intrusive uplighting. I get what you were going for. I'm just trying to avoid issues and just give public feedback, that's all.
Yeah, no, well, I, I personally am a fan of uplighting if it's done correctly. So if this code is in any way going to start to infringe upon a property owner's rights to do uplighting, then we're going to need to change that wording somehow to, to get that out of there. And then secondly, you know, with the flag, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to that either. I mean, that, that is a federal guideline. You're absolutely right, Jordan, and that's something that, you know, I always enjoy seeing, and I, I don't want to try to, you know, get in the way of that either, so. So Chip, how do we change?
Yeah, I don't, you know, again, that, that's something that was taken directly from East Aurora as well, and that's, but yeah, as I, you know, as you think about it, I mean, we also, we probably have quite a few ground signs in the Village also that are, you know, have...
Lit in that manner.
Yeah, um, what might make sense is, I'm curious, I'm curious about, you know, maybe Tim or, or the code enforcement officer could touch base with the Village of East Aurora, and ask them how they have been enforced, or what their experience has been with that particular provision. But yeah, I can see the problem with that too. Again, I mean, the simplest way, I mean, if we want to reduce this thing to its simplest form, we could just keep A, you know, which is, again, it's just like, don't have obnoxious lighting, and not try to, you know, regulate it.
I think Jordan brought up two really good points, and I'm not, I wouldn't be a fan of having, giving anyone in the Village an issue with either one of those. So if that's the case, then, you know, get rid of B and just keep A there.
I would also argue that East Aurora's Village housing is a little bit different than our Village housing. It's a more rural, there's more space between properties.
Okay, so would everyone be okay with just getting, eliminating B altogether and just keeping A?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Deb?
Yeah?
Deb, this is Nick Ross, 135 Oak Road, but my only concern is, is there going to be a definition of obnoxious? A lot of what I've heard sounds like it, it's going to be a lot of subjective judgment as to what is acceptable and is what is not acceptable.
It's, the language is, you know, unnecessary illumination in a manner, I mean, we're using very similar language, and it's nuisance-type language. It's the same language we use to regulate things like noise and, and other things. It's very difficult to define that beyond that. It's, it's using light in a manner that unreasonably interferes with your neighbor's enjoyment of their property is essentially what it's saying. And yeah, there's, there's going to be a subjective element of that, but it's also going to be, have to be proven if, if somebody's written up for that. I really don't know of a way, I mean, so again, the Village very, very strictly regulates lighting in the MU and NMU districts with, with more objective metrics, but it was not my understanding from the Village that they wanted to get into that level of detail in trying to regulate residential lighting. And that, so that's why this is drafted in such a way, to basically just incorporate nuisance concepts, which is something that, you know, enforcement agencies and courts deal with all the time.
Okay, thank you.
You're absolutely right, Chip, and, and Nick, that is, that's exactly what we asked Chip for. We weren't, you know, just, you know, a nuisance. I mean, and I think that it, it can be very subjective, but I think that it really would be upon the person who's having an issue with it to reach out to code enforcement and to, you know, essentially kind of prove their case or their concern, you know, the offensive lighting.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and like you said, Mayor, I think this is, you know, something that maybe, may, let's keep it broad to start with. If it looks like it's not covering everything, or things are, if there's difficulty with enforcing it because it's determined to be too vague, then we can revisit it.
We can learn as we go. So I'm going to just say then, I think if everyone's okay with it, we would just strike B.
I think it makes sense.
Okay, yes.
All right, before I close the public hearing, are there any other public comments on this proposed law?
No one else has asked to speak? No one else has asked to speak, but if anyone else has anything, let us know.
Okay.
Just one question. Is, is non-compliance covered in some other part of our code that would apply to this then, that John Doe or Mary Doe does something with lighting, that's, okay?
Yes, so this chapter is the public order chapter, which is basically where the village regulates for the other offensive type of things, noise and those sorts of things. And if you violate that chapter, you get cited and you can be fined for it. So that is, that is, there's, there is a penalty provision of chapter 73 that we're not proposing to amend, but.
Okay.
Okay, so seeing no other comments, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on excessive offensive lighting with the, that we will vote on it on May 26. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll make a motion to open the third public hearing, which is also a continuation of the March 9, 2020 public hearing on the Parks Master Plan and Guidance documents.
Do we want to, do we want to do that first, or do we want to flip-flop and do the taxation one? Because I've got about a half hour and the people are here for the taxation thing at Parks.
Then sure, we'll flip-flop it. So we'll go to, scratch that, we'll go to public hearing number four, which is, I will make a motion to open that for individuals to comment on the proposed amendment to adjust the exemption limits on taxation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if you are here to comment on that public hearing, I ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Do you want to tell them what it is?
Sure. Well, I kind of, it's, Judy, I'm going to let you explain it, but for me, I mean, we've kind of passed the budget already and it's really going to be more for next year, right?
Yes.
You're muted, Judy.
I'm going to let Judy discuss it.
It's, it basically, it takes into effect income levels and age, and it's going to pretty much mirror the exemption that the town has. And we're looking at both the senior citizen exemption and the disability exemptions.
And this is something that we already have on the books, but that none of us on this board were even aware existed and has not been reviewed or evaluated in, fill in the blank, 20 years?
19 years. 2001 was, I believe, 2001 was the last time the senior citizen exemption was reviewed. I think it's been longer for the disability one.
So at this point, really, all we're, all we're proposing to do is to mirror the town's exemption levels.
Right, which is basically the, the income levels.
Right. And then, and then moving forward, you know, have some sort of more proactive sort of review of this with the town when they do their reassessments.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so this does, both, this law as well as the next one we're going to be talking about, do, basically, we're just incorporate, since the town does the, your, your assessments anyway, and since the board wanted to conform the incomes that can claim this exemption to match the town, it seemed to make sense to basically just do exactly what the town's doing. So that's pretty much what these do, but I, we'll just note that there's, it's not automatic, so these numbers change periodically. So if you look at, Keaton, if you can scroll down a little bit, the value of M, that's the one you'll have to keep changing and you'll have to work with Amherst if you want to stay in lockstep with them.
Keep going, Keaton. There it is.
There it is. So right now, M's $27,000. Under our current law, we don't talk in terms of M necessarily, but basically, the...
Is M 27,000 or 18,500?
It depends on which law you're looking at. So for the seniors, it's 27, for the veterans disability, it's 18.
So, so right now, right now, the, under the village's law, the current law in the village, that level, that dollar amount is $12,025. So it's probably, because as Judy said, hasn't really been revisited since 2001. So it really hasn't kept up.
So is there, like, any insight as to why, since 2001, previous boards haven't discussed it?
I, I don't know. I mean, again, I've been working with village boards since 2008 and I don't think this has ever come up since I've been, I, I just don't think anybody thought about it. It's just, it's just been there and doing what it's been doing unless somebody pays attention to it. And I think partly because the village doesn't do its own assessments, you know, it just wasn't on, we don't have a village tax assessor, so there was nobody to really bring it to the board's attention as something that wasn't keeping, keeping up to date.
Okay. All right, so I, did I make the motion already to open it?
Yeah.
Give me a second, okay. So if you're interested in commenting on this, if you could just state your name and address for the record. Keaton, anyone?
No, no one's, no one's asked. If anybody would like to talk, please do.
I'll just point out, from the historical record, that when the village first adopted this in 1999, it was Mayor Piazza who moved this.
I know it was on my watch, but I don't remember what motivated us at the time. I don't recall that part.
All right, well, so I think it's a, you know, it's a good benefit to, you know, certainly be in step with the town on this issue. So I, unless there's other comments from the board, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing tonight with a vote on this at the May 26 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
See, aren't you glad you didn't wait around for that?
Thank you. I, I didn't realize you were taking a half an hour.
I, I told you last time. You asked and I said it'd be about 30 minutes.
Oh, boy.
We can, we can do a continuation if you want.
Good thing we had a, good thing we did take that break in between work sessions.
Yeah, I got, I've got, I've got, you know, PowerPoint presentation for you, so there's something to look at, at least.
Well, if I'd have known it was going to be a PowerPoint, I'd have popped some popcorn on that. Movie night here or something.
I don't have any real great animations or anything.
I'm sure it's going to be wonderful, so. Okay, so without further ado, I will make a motion to open the continuation of public hearing, March 9, 2020, on the proposed Parks Master Plan and Guidance Documents.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will, I won't open the floor just yet for, for comments, because we're going to let trustee E. to do his presentation, and then I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions afterwards.
Can you see my screen?
I can.
All right, so introducing what we're calling POP 2025, the Parks, the Picture Our Parks Initiative, which includes over a year-long's effort. This was scheduled for the 23rd, I'll cross that out, it's the 11th. And so it starts back in 2009 with the community plan, which detailed specific guidelines for our future, for development and infrastructure, policymaking. And there were two specific objectives and three actions listed in, in the community plan that this was all based on. So objective four was to create a village-wide green highway, and to do that was to prepare a park improvement plan, attempt to carry the parks across Main Street, and create a recreational gateway. And then objective one, which is out of order, but it's the way it's being presented, was to ensure that the village zoning was consistent with the comprehensive plan. So objective four, and had this original graphic and this idea of trying to create a secondary ring of green space out and around the perimeter of the Main Street District. It identified that the parks, because they're removed from Main Street, they're not readily visible, easily accessible from Main Street. It identified that each park seems to, you know, have a separate function in relative isolation to the next, and that there's not necessarily a great connection between them. And it recommended a better physical and visual connection, and that ideally, this would take place in the context of a village plan. So that unified plan was to ensure the village could properly plan for that park and draw together all the various recommendations and components into one document, including feasibility and fiscal analysis. And in 2007, that was budgeted as a $40,000 to $85,000 effort, which our Parks Committee, with a little bit of assistance from a couple of consultants, completed basically for free. And we paid, we paid a couple of thousands of dollars in consultant's fees, but nowhere even remotely close to what was budgeted for this. And this has been literally on the back burner for 11 years. So Parks Committee started really in earnest last summer after, you know, we closed the park, the Island Park Pool, after, you know, there was significant noticeable damage to the playground equipment at South Long, and after we finalized the land swap and section house issues. It's, they started the process this time last year with the park survey. So quickly going through the results of the park survey, we got 381 respondents, 90, over 90% of which lived in the village and near one of our parks, was roughly equally distributed in age and about, and slightly less than half of those that responded actually have children under the age of 18. So these are real park users and they really do represent a decent cross-section of our demographics. So the results for each park, the highest priority things that were noted for each park, starting with Garrison, 60, over 60% of respondents said that permanent bathroom facilities were an important feature of Garrison, and 20% saw a changing room at the pool as being a valuable addition. 34% were interested in improving the pool area in general, another 32% in cookout facilities and picnic tables, and another 27% were interested in additional toys and playgrounds. Island Park has a much longer list, 47% were interested in water access through a kayak or canoe launch, additional walking paths, playground equipment, cookout facilities. 27% were interested in a permanent bench shell, other quarter were interested in more attractive entry to the bridge. The splash pad pool or other water feature was tested separately and almost 50% wanted a zero-depth splash pad, another 42% were interested in a splash pad slash, you know, multipurpose space with the bench shell and on down for fountains and other types of installations. South Long, a very long list. Basically, if you, if you look at this list and you look at what's included, trees, paths, tennis courts, you know, cookout facilities, basketball courts, basically, the respondents were asking for a park to be at South Long Park. Right now, we have a big rectangle of grass with some, you know, some miscellaneous equipment and things, and, you know, people are really looking for something, you know, substantial at South Long. And over three-quarters of respondents were positive on the, on the idea of a new layout that would, the, the connection between the Lehigh Railroad District and the South Long Park in general. So with Lehigh Railroad separately, there was interest in, in some sort of railroad-themed child's play equipment, additional walking paths, interpretive signage, you know, quarter of the respondents registered in an engine. With the section house, very little opinion was held as to, you know, what to actually do with the section house. I mean, the vast majority of the respondents had no opinion whatsoever. I likely attribute that mostly to unfamiliarity with what the building is or even what the section house, that it even exists. But, you know, then 30-plus percent were both interested in the idea of it being the Historical Society or the Lehigh Depot or combination of the two. Miscellaneous things around the survey included the driveway connection to South Long, not to open a sore subject, but just to say that 70% of the respondents rated five or above in favor of some form of driveway out of the Natali property. But many were, many expressed confusion about the topic, about the images, about, you know, vehicular pedestrian interaction. And, you know, we did speak about this ad nauseam last summer during village board meetings. Essentially put the conversation on hold pending, you know, the results of an actual in-place function of that development. The other aspect of the survey questioned whether or not anyone was interested in the idea of a dog park. This was, had the most overwhelmingly positive responses with 79% rating five or above in favor. But we did make it clear that this is not a village-funded project, and at least of those who responded and participated in the survey, no one had any vocal objections to the idea. The guidance document then comes out of this. So the guidance document is actually, it's meant to be a living document. The recommendation from the Parks Committee would be that the village board sort of adopted as the, as what it is, as a guidance document that would be used for their own purposes in, you know, spearheading future development through the parks, as well as giving DPW a roadmap for expectations, timeframes, chores that need doing, things like that. Ben has already looked through it and given us feedback on, you know, what their normal processes are. There's not, nothing was in there that was asking for, for the stars, really just making sure that, you know, there is one concise document that people could literally go through on an annual basis, semi-annual basis, you know, whatever might be the case for the activity, and check off those activities as being completed, that, you know, we got a mulch this year, or we mulch every three years, or whatever might be the case. So it's a living document that's meant to be perpetually updated. It currently lives in Google Docs, I can make it available for people to read through. It is, if you think some of our documents are dry, just try reading this sucker. It is dry. But it's all, it's basically just built up in a, in an outline format. It's built off of the Glen Park Guidance Document that Chris Bonaventura and the Glen Park Joint Board built, and it's just been modified to match our, you know, our parks. It does not include Glen Park, that is a separate park. But it does include everything you see listed there. It's broken into four main sections, the overview of the park, which just kind of gives general descriptions, ownership, things like that, existing conditions, including, you know, all of the infrastructure and equipment that might be in the park currently and/or in the future, and as things phase in and phase out. The general operations and maintenance for each thing, and then it has an area for future plans, which will be the bulk of this conversation. The other thing is that it was all written to be aligned with the New York State Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, which outlines four overarching themes for New York outdoor recreation. This guidance document and the future plans and developments directly addresses eight of the New York State Parks and Recreation stated goals. And because we are, we have aligned this in such a way that, that we do meet those goals, we can use this as a way of leveraging against grant funding for future development projects. It's within the, so I just, I basically just already went through this, but within the overview, there's mission, vision, history, and all this other jazz. Skip this one. So, future plans. So for all the parks, the idea was to create, establish, and foster volunteerism, to establish new community activities to promote increased uses of the parks. They're talking.
They got 350,000 cars that are going to hit the used car market because they'll have to sell them off. Now, that's not going to happen next month, but it's going to happen over time.
Keaton, can you mute Nick? Nick?
Yeah.
You're, you're not on mute. They're considering some idea, some way of, you know, maybe having some sort of social media presence or branding, and then they're also talking about the idea of trying to standardize signage across the parks and things like this. These are, you know, long view sort of goals and approaches that they're trying to take. Within Garrison, there was interest to see an improvement and increase in parking along Park Street, providing additional shade at the pool, which we did last year, fix the pool and improve access and slip resistance, which we did last year, improve, update, maintain the gazebo, get it a fresh paint job, additional tables and seating, maybe... Improve, update, maintain the gazebo, get it a fresh paint job, additional tables and seating, maybe consider additional grills. There is not currently in the next five year plan, a plan for additional play features, but it's not, it's not off the table in, you know, some future. That plate, that play structure there is in good shape and relatively new within the last ten years. It's the newest piece of equipment we have in the village. And then the big thing was to construct new permanent bathroom building. So they're trying to incorporate changing rooms and storage, attempting to relocate, maybe update the pool equipment if needed or if possible. And then also incorporate some safe way to check residency and collect user fees to find the fund for their maintenance. So, and these are all things that we talked about. We hired, they hired Glenn Battalia Architects to do a study. So this was the results of the study. So because previous attempts to put bathrooms at Garrison Park have been met with sharp resistance from the neighbors due to aesthetics, position, approach, et cetera. We thought, well, maybe, maybe there's something that can be done to do this, you know, more attractively, more consistent with the neighborhood, try and keep it diminutive, make it fit the functions better that we're trying to achieve. Flum Battalia compressed this down to five hundred square feet. Got a professional estimate from Trophy Point, which is the biggest construction estimating firm locally, who by the way, I will say is very good at what they do and their budgets, their estimates have never been low. So therefore they always have their thumb on the scale just a little bit. So every number they ever come up with is going to be higher than the actual bid price. But even still, they've estimated that this small five hundred square foot, relatively attractive pool, bathroom feature could cost upwards of three hundred thousand dollars. Only eighty thousand of that is actual materials excluding a utility improvement. So the vast majority of that budget is based on prevailing wage rates and things of that nature, which really tip the scales against a small installation like this. So interestingly, when you compare that to the less attractive precast options that were met with resistance, those fall in usually between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand. So it's not, it's oddly not out of the realm of budget from that perspective, but it is an extraordinary expenditure for six hundred square feet. And at this time, the, the committee has put this in the guidance document as a, as a bell to ring eventually, but is not actively moving forward with this. I think there's more work to be done here. We need to see if there are things that we can do with DPW or some other ways to bring this price tag down. Because three hundred thousand dollars is just an obscene sum of money. Unless someone just wants to give us three hundred thousand dollars, then I'm happy to build it for every dollar we can spend. So moving on, then that, that is literally the only thing that was proposed for Garrison of any magnitude. Island Park. The bathroom repair and upgrade finishes, DPW has been working on that. Thank you, Ben. There's suggestion about painting a mural on the back wall of the pavilion, cleaning and painting the roof framing. Purchasing retractable sides, which we did last year in time for Halloween. And then you'll see in the upcoming slides, the idea of removing some railings on the west side and creating patio area. There's, there's a direction to provide a performance shelter or stage, the kind of space that the ASO could use and that then we could use for other events throughout the year. That could be used during old home days as well for their stage events. There's, you know, interest in remediating the shoreline, these parts of, you know, that part of the work would be covered under the LWRP as well as anything related to the weir and dam systems. So proposed plans for Island Park include the suggestion of modifying parking in the town lot. Trying to reassert that connection to Main Street like the comprehensive plan suggested. Increase, you know, paths on the island and make, you know, a more visible entrance to the, to the park at the bridge. Potentially even establish an alternate or additional entry over the dam should the dam remain in existence or get rebuilt. Pursue that kayak launch that people were so interested in. Pursue the replacement of playground equipment as well as some form of pool or water feature replacement. Which brings us to the proposed map that was prepared by our landscape architect, Molly Ventura. So starting here in the, in the town lot, the suggestion is to propose to the town that we narrow their lot because it's over large right now. And create more of a green space that would mimic the, the pocket park on the other side of the library. This would align better with the, the bridge. Bring you from the Hawk Signal across through the lot and save space across the crosswalk through the new archway, similar to what's at Glen, Glen Park and across and into the park. This is all a nod towards the comp plan, which says to make the parks more visible, to connect them back to Main Street and to attempt to get them to cross Main Street. Now we would have Island crossing at the Hawk Signal continuing over to Garrison and on down Creek. In a safe, walkable sort of connection. The second part would be the pathing system. So obviously the driveway that's going to the pavilion is there now. There's like a macadam like pathing system that could be built over a series of seasons, similar to the the compacted stone dust that was built over at eighteen twelve triangle there. And then the, you know, as you would enter the island, obviously there's still the driveway along that we would keep that would lead you to the pavilion, but the pavilion area would get modified. The loop around the pavilion is proposed to be eliminated. A larger pla, a larger plaza sort of patio space. This actually is illustrated over large. It would probably stop more like back here at the gable to create an opportunity for some spill out activity inside and outside as opposed to being constrained in by all the the railings that are there now. It often gets, often gets very bottlenecked when we have crowds of people coming in the front side and then getting smashed in. And they can't get out the side. So this would create some relief on like the strawberry festivals and days like that. This would also then potentially have some perimeter connections to the adjacent walking paths and also lead you over to this new area, which would be this seventeen would be some sort of reimagined sort of boat launch. It's currently shown with a kind of prefabricated kayak launch that they have at Elica Creek Park, which the cost of this is astronomical. It was like forty thousand dollars. It's insane. We could do it for two thousand dollars or less with the much simpler system. And we don't really see a huge quantity of people, you know, necessarily lining up to use this. But should it, should it take on, you know, life of its own, it could even become a small business opportunity where people could have like a rental for boats and things like that. The other thing would then be the pavilion, the, the band shelter. So again, this is sort of oriented tucked back, you know, off the great lawn and creating that same sort of space that we use for the ASO concerts. But this would be a permanent shelter or something, you know, and visualize something like this, this, the one that's shown here is actually physically larger than what we would propose to do. The, the size was tested to fit the ASO. The idea would that it be sort of raised up on a series of pads, eight inches each step, or sorry, six inches each step. So that you could have a smaller performance under the shelter. And in the event that you have the ASO or something like that, and they need more space, they spill out onto the tiers below and there's enough room to actually sort of create like a thrust stage like aspect. Off, you know, when it's not in function, it, it functions as a park shelter. We can put tables and chairs under there. And it creates another, another, you know, opportunity for rentals. Ideally, what we would love to see happen is an organization like the Jolly Boys or the ASO or even to that extent, Williamsville Schools, who has a spectacular music program, maybe becomes a partner in the financing and granting of this. Which brings us to the last big area of development, which is the playground area. So you'll notice right now that thirteen is the small gazebo that's there. Nothing's proposed to be done to the gazebo except to, you know, clean it up and paint it and maintain it. But instead, what we're proposing, well, not just what we're proposing, but what's, what's in plan here is a complete re, reconstruction of all the playground equipment on Island Park. So just to orient you here, in the bottom left, you see the red rectangle. That's the existing bathroom. The small octagon shape is the existing gazebo. The premise is that all of the playground equipment would be completely removed and replaced. And arrayed around the gazebo in such a way that parents could sit in the shade of the gazebo and have a two hundred and seventy degree, three hundred and eighty degree view with no way out for the kids other than, you know, by them. The other thing is, is that as you approach this from the, from the bridge, the smallest, youngest kid features are right up front. And they kind of grow in size and age, putting the, with the swings at the far backside out of the, you know, the safest location for them. Based on current plans. This was developed with a head to head competition between playground consultants. Each given a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar equipment budget. And then middle, middle school students were also solicited for their input on types of equipment and the types of features and the way they like to use playgrounds and, and the best way to lay these things out. And in doing so, we got invaluable information that actually made the playground equipment more, we actually got more equipment for less money because the students were more interested in seeing a deconstructed sort of system as opposed to a modular system like we have at Garrison, where you spend a lot of money on poles and decking, but you don't get many toys. The demolition, the whole site demolition and improvements would be completed by our DPW staff. But the playground itself would need a community build and volunteers for this fall if possible. So it would be a complete replacement of all the existing playground equipment. The new system would include two, a two to five playground with two slides and bucket swings. A four person we saw or teeter totter. Four swings, including a buddy swing, which would be like a parent and a child or two children swinging together face to face. As well as what they call an oodle swing, which is an all, which is an inclusionary swing that allows multiple kids to occupy one sort of donut like ring and swing in multiple directions. The whole system would have three slides, a Mobius strip climber, net climbers, various other monkey bars and balance beams, all arranged in what's known as a challenge course. So there is no end and no beginning. The idea is that you could, you know, you and your friend could, you know, challenge each other to race from here to there and up and down and all around. And it would, you know, it's, it's never the same twice. Also included is space for the mayor's requested zip crews, which is a phase two element that can be added later on. Very similar to what they have over at Billy Wilson Park. That the estimated construction value of the entire thing that you see here is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that includes a significant chunk of labor from the DPW side as well as this hundred and twenty five thousand dollar SAM grant that Keaton was alluding to earlier. Which has, we have been working with a summon woman, Karen McMahon, on securing. So the splash pad, splash pad was the last big thing. It was kind of what's kicked all this off was the idea of removing the pool. The original position that you see on the the graphic here, number eleven, which is sort of circular and tucked up and connected to the playground is, is not compatible with the playground surfacing. The, the wood chips. Incidentally, the, the rubberized surfacing that you're seeing a lot more playgrounds have, that literally doubles the cost of the playground and it has a five year lifespan, whereas the playground wood chips are a fraction of that cost. It's a system that our DPW as well versed in using and knows how often they need to be refreshed. It's much less expensive, much easier maintenance and it lasts significantly longer. So that being said, once you, you start using those, you can't have them spilling over into the wet area. It becomes a hazard. So you have, will have to move the splash pad further away. That's getting into trees. It's starting to block the great lawn. It also requires a dedicated three inch water line. An eight by ten utility room that would either be in the bathroom building, the old pool house or somewhere else. Or maybe be a utility, utility shed. Also requires a four inch drain line. All of those utilities, which are not currently serving the bathroom on Island Park, would have to cross the creek. Estimated value of the splash pad is two hundred thousand dollars without utility improvements. And those utility improvements are somewhere between eighty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So during this process, the question became, is this the right place for the water feature? So that brings me to South Long, the Lehigh Trail and Depot District. This has some interesting situations because of its relationship to adjacent properties, including, you know, the Asher Crossing. It has direct links to the Village Railroad District. It it is also surrounding a commercial property of a large ugly yellow box. The, the issues with South Long are that it's pretty much a start over to a large extent. And that it's a bit of a shell grain, shell game that starts with, with finding a relocation for the DPW side yard, section house improvements. Move one thing, do the next thing, move the, move the tennis courts, relocate this, relocate that. Some decisions that were made is that, you know, no additional parking is intended at the north end. But the ninety six South Long property is intended to be parking as part of the expanded railroad district. There's also a suggestion to consider a small amount of public parking at the section house. Improvements of the depot would be, you know, to, to acquire an engine, which the town of Amherst did throw some money at. And, you know, last year and the district, the depot is actively trying to acquire that. That being said, if they do acquire it, and once it's located and brought here, the equipment to hoist it and set it into position is a fairly substantial sum of money. The suggestion has been to relocate all the train cars to the historic railroad alignment. More or less in front of the depot, though, you know, to the extent that we've received comment, it would be, they'd be pushed further away from South Long so as not to block the view of the depot. But they would be on the south side of the depot on the original track alignment. Reportedly, those tracks are still there, but they're currently buried under the pavement that the parking lot is in. So we'd have to get the parking lot off of there, get the trail, the rails exposed, get the equipment there, get the engine there, move the cars while it's on site, et cetera, et cetera. Lastly, signage, again, some sort of gateway signage and interpretive signage. So this is what South Long looks like right now. And this is what it's proposed to look like in the future. So first area to look at would be the depot. So as I said, we relocate the parking lot to ninety six South Long. This frees up the current alignment of Lehigh Trail and where they're parking now. Gets the rail lines back installed, puts the the train cars back in front of the depot, more or less. Also proposes the idea of a patio expansion out here to permit them to actually utilize the depot more as a a rental property for small gatherings, small weddings, even as a, even to a certain degree as like a park shelter. With, you know, improved access to a a new expanded pathing system. So the paths would, are proposed to connect Lehigh Trail to Main Street through what's known as the Section Keeper's Walk. There'd be, you know, there's proposed suggestions for modifying the Village Square Lane to become part of that walk. I'll show that in a minute. Improving crosswalks at South Long Village Square Lane, maybe even a mid block crosswalk at the Lehigh Trail. The addition of a park shelter, which doesn't, that South Long currently does not have. Pursuing, you know, repairs to the section house and finding a purpose for that. And then also relocating and improving the playground area. So this, this corridor now, which is, you know, known as the Section Keeper's Walk, is a suggested, you know, paved path, which, you know, bisects the Lehigh Trail at its, its terminus here and starts bringing people diagonally up towards Milton and eventually up towards Main Street. It creates a separation and a, and a corridor to connect Lehigh Trail back into the neighborhood. It creates, it opens up spaces here for the revised playground area, which can then be proximate to that, maybe even railroad themed. It creates space for a pavilion space or small shelter space that could be available for rentals. It also incorporates a, a proposed feature of a I don't even know how to pronounce this, analemic sundial. So the idea is it's the passive feature that's built into the ground that allows a, an individual to stand there. And then your shadow actually tells the appropriate time. This was a sort of a tack on. They were trying to create some sort of a, you know, an interesting feature. But it, it was, you know, it's not necessarily rationalized yet. To the bottom right is sort of. To the bottom right is sort of a, give you an idea of, you know, the concept of what the Section Keeper's Walk surfacing might look like. They're talking about adding, you know, bike path pumps and things of this nature to, to improve. You know, just general easy little things that may be even a ready share bike rack in this area. The other thing you'll note here, these white boxes that are right along the Section Keeper's Walk. This is illustrated to suggest us a potential alternate location for the farmer's market. And a permanent home that would be, that gives you an idea of how the, how wide the Section Keeper's Walk is proposed to be. And that it would actually permit a vehicle to pass down through here like we, you know, for emergencies like we have, or even just for stocking and unstocking. The, the tents and whatnot. This last part is important because this Section Keeper's Walk is the first nod. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead of myself. The one thing that has been suggested as, as opposed to the sundial would actually be to pursue a splash pad in this location. And potentially even make it a clock. The idea being that railroad theme clocks were very important, staying on time, being on schedule. And so the suggestion was that this could actually be a, a legitimately functional clock with the fountain heads actually telling the time during the day. And this is physically possible to do. It's, but it comes at a bit of a cost. The last thing is to say that you'll notice that Section Keeper's Walk does not preclude at this point, any sort of connection between Natale and South Lawn. That there is, you know, on the days when let's say the farmer's market is not in place, there is the potential to make that connection should something need to be done in the future. We have not, we've intentionally left this as an open corridor so that it, it shut the door on it. The next part is the north half of the Section Keeper's Walk, which you'll notice connects up to Milton and heads north along Village Square Lane. So this is Village Square Lane today, looking at it from Main Street. And again, this nod is towards trying to reconnect Main Street with the, the park, create this greenway, get people to, you know, find the park. And we propose a shared driveway, walkway surfacing of this nature, which would help to narrow this a little bit, green it up more. And since it's a relatively low traffic area, it's already one way today. It's mostly servicing these businesses along, in this area on the backside of California and De Volio here. It seemed like a perfect opportunity to create a bit of a pedestrian path. That, you know, sort of European style could be shared with low volume, uh, low volume vehicles. So then the last big part is the sports recreational facilities. The, it was saw, it was seen that the ball diamond was important to individuals. How the ball diamond is achieved and how the, the infield is maintained, whether it's clay or, or more desirably even a, a more semi-permanent artificial surfacing is up for debate at this point. But the idea is to relocate the backstop over into this corner along the Section Keeper's Walk. Relocate the tennis courts and the basketball courts over towards DPW at the north end. Where it's out of the, the residences more, we hopefully would then have less vandalism. Less, you know, people complaining about noise and people, you know, hanging around like we were just talking about tonight. Because now this is much more, you know, pushed up towards the street and away from the residences. The other thing is number 17 would be either a new or relocated small gazebo shelter. That would be more proximate to the parking lot as opposed to over here where it's, you know, always a smoking shelter and, you know, paving for miscreants. The last part is that the great lawn would be maintained. It would not be striped, but it's illustrated here to be, you know, a small scale children's size, regulation size soccer field. So the point is simply to say that the space is available for, you know, some form of regulation play. Even if it's not, you know, not doing the Olympics here. The last image of this is to show you what the park would look like without the international chimney facility. So that being said, there's room for a second or even potentially larger picnic shelter like space. There's potential for more trees, more paths. But I'd also like to point out that this, the way that the, the property has been laid out also does not preclude an alternative way to deal with the Natale developments, you know, traffic flow. And to create a connection as a Milton Street corridor extension to directly connect to South Lawn. This would not just benefit Natale. This would not put just their traffic in and out through the park. This would actually, you know, create a new thoroughfare, a new way to get into and out of an otherwise somewhat circular and dead end neighborhood. And would also create the opportunity for additional parking along the curb line to serve as the park. And a new entrance and really integrate this, this park into the neighborhood as opposed to being sort of at the end of a dead end. The last thing I want to just draw your attention to is it's, it's hard to see. I'm going to back up for a second. In the Section Keeper's Walk. Right here, this U shape is a proposed parking that would kind of hook around at the end of Milton Street would give DPW the opportunity to actually have a turnaround for the, the plows as they're, they're plowing Milton. But it does depend on a connection back onto Natale's driveway out onto Milton here. And we would have to negotiate some sort of permissible access easement or circulation through there if that was to be the case. So moving along. So the really big ticket thing here, so Garrison Park is about 175 to 300,000. That's primarily just the bathroom. Garrison, Island Park is estimated at between 880 and 1.4 million. South Lawn, the depot and Lehigh Trail is somewhere between one and 1.3 million. These, these numbers are why the capital, the parks capital improvement line was increased to 150,000 from what it had been at 20 or 25 for decades to cover roughly 25 to 38% of the total estimated costs of this project, of these projects. The goal with all of these things, all of these numbers are not set in stone. They're, they're rough, you know, engineers estimates and each project will be, you know, thoroughly vetted and bought down to the greatest extent possible. But we wanted to find sort of the high end and keep our thumb on the scale to make sure that, you know, we, we had a legitimate target in mind. I did pull out here, you'll know, the, this small sliver here is the rehabs of the bathrooms that I mentioned earlier, thanks to Ben. This large green portion here is the playground equipment in Island Park. Then I just wanted to draw this, the point that you'll notice this $425,000 number, which is this big gray piece of the pie here. That's at South Lawn. That would be for all the lawn and sports improvements. Because we're doing this sort of shell game of moving things around and then picking up established pieces of infrastructure and relocating them permanently to whole new places. There is, you know, a significant investment in doing that, but it creates a better park. The last part is objective one, which was to ensure village zoning was consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as you know, we've been working on the idea of down zoning South Lawn because it's currently an MU and an R3M. And that process started last year in June. It was met with some skepticism because it was saying, at the same time as this discussion about the Natale development and the driveway to South Lawn, but they're mutually exclusive. They just happen to be occurring in the same, you know, time period. And one does not affect the other in any way. But right now we have gotten all the proposed property boundaries revised. We have gotten all of the, we had to separate the DPW from the park and separate the park from Village Square Lane and create three separate parcels there. And in the process, we also combined a parcel that was on Milton Street that's always been apparently part of the park, but was some sort of small residential parcel. And so we've cleaned up our property boundaries. The down zoning has to go to planning board before a final decision can be made. The next step, however, after all of that would be to pursue, would be for the Parks Committee to recommend to the village board that we consider the idea of a new urban open space zoning designation. This would be again, sort of playing off of the comp plan. You know, Chip will tell you that it's not expressly important to do this, but the idea is to really draw out to the, the community that there are these large swaths of green space that you see here. And more importantly, to provide some regulations and guidance regarding new development that's proximate to these green spaces in such a way that protects them, preserves them, enhances them, and doesn't encroach on them in a negative way in the future. Any questions?
It's a major effort.
Matt?
Yeah.
This is Nick Ross, 135 Oak Grove, and I apologize for my faux pas earlier, but just a quick note. I noticed that with the reorientation or the re layout of the tennis court in South Lawn Park. It's facing east, it's following an east and west orientation. I'm not a tennis player, but I know that tennis players don't like to play on courts that go east and west. The majority of tennis courts are aligned north to south to diminish the effect of the rising and the setting sun.
Okay. That's a, I'm not a tennis player either. That's a good comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
Oh, what is happening?
What is that? Ew. That is disgusting.
Keaton?
I think we just got Zoom bombed.
Yep. Kick this person out.
Take this person out.
Take him out, take him out.
Working on removing them all. There's a bunch that just came that want in. This is pathetic. All right.
This is pathetic.
Keaton linked the code. We got in here because Keaton put it on Twitter.
Oh my God. Keaton.
Yeah, Keaton shared the code on Twitter. He put hashtag Zoom codes and then pasted the Zoom code on Twitter. That's how we got on.
All right. I feel like we're getting somewhere. How are we looking?
We're still viewing this.
This drawing? Yeah.
Oh, we cleaned up now?
Well, no. They're still coming.
All right. I think we got them all. All right. I think we're ready to resume. Sorry about that. Also, I only put it on Facebook, not Twitter, so I don't know where those people are coming from.
Well, it's not, I mean, you know, that's, you don't need to apologize for that. It's just, you know.
It was bound to happen eventually.
I suppose so.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
For a minute, Matt, I thought you were like bringing in like, you know, outside entertainment.
Nope. Sorry.
Got music. I was like, you know.
Yeah, I'm not that prepared. I'm much drier than that.
Hey Matt, any guess of it on timeframe in order to complete a lot of this stuff?
Well, the, the picture our parks 2025 is so named because we are aggressively attempting to complete this type of work in five years. If for no other reason than to, you know, create an ambitious goal.
Okay.
If we can achieve that, that's awesome. If we can't, we can certainly work on whittling away at it to the largest extent possible. I mean, obviously finding a, a home for the DPW side yard has been an ongoing and unsuccessful, you know, effort thus far. So things will have a way of, you know, controlling that. But we're trying to create an ambitious endeavor. There's also a funding issue.
Well, I would assume that it's going to have to be major funding over, over those years.
Yeah. Right. Yes. Theoretically, had I been presenting this three months ago and there wasn't a COVID pandemic. We would be using this, all the materials that were created and start knocking on all the doors of the Hyatt Electives because, you know, they had not, their priorities were, would not be otherwise distracted.
I just wanted to say, nice work. This is why you're here. The, you guys in the committee did a really nice job. Does a nice job of painting what we would love to try to proceed, hopefully within the next 10 years, if not sooner.
Is the power plant going to be available for people to view?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get all the documents over to, to Keaton here. I was just, wasn't prepared to get it all over to him. But yeah, we'll, we'll get it all posted on the website. I'll get a link to the Google Drive for the, the Parks Mass, for the guides document. I'll assemble all of the paperwork from Molly and the estimates and whatnot. I'll be able to review.
It'd almost be nice if you, I, I like the overlay of your explanation of it. If I, as a general user, just went through it, I'm not saying that we use the, the video from tonight, but maybe sit down and try to do a voiceover with it, or at least a voiceover of explaining, going through the presentation, maybe. Of what we put out there. If, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, and we can even take a look at the video from tonight and see if there's a way we can cut it out specifically that chunk.
I think he can.
I think you should be able to do that.
Especially the end part.
Right.
With the phallus. That's.
Unreal.
Hey, that's it for me.
Any other public comments on the proposed Parks Master Plan?
I think all who's left is Jordan Abrams. He'd like to speak. He may. We have Kelly and Rappel. I, I think those might be Village Hall employees though.
I'm all set on the Parks Plan. Thanks, Keaton.
You're welcome, Jordan. Thanks for sticking around during the mayhem.
So, so Matt, if, you know, because nobody really knows what the state of that SAM grant is or isn't at this point.
Yes.
If we don't get that, we have budgeted, you know, the 125 this year in our Parks Plan. So is the thought that we would still kind of, and still should be proceeding regardless to kind of get that going with maybe a fall build date?
I would like to see it move forward.
Me too.
You know, I, obviously what the future holds is up in the air. And what will be allowed to do and will it even be physically possible to do a community build? In, you know, September at this point, I don't know. But, you know, when I reached out to Parketex, the suggestion was put together a, a steering committee and we'll pick a date and we can work towards that goal. And, you know, maybe, maybe it doesn't happen. Maybe we have to kick the can on it, but I really wouldn't, I'd really prefer not to. I also, on the other hand, then we can also look at some of the smaller. I also, on the other hand, then we can also look at some of the smaller low hanging fruit type of, types of things and say, do we want, would it be better to prioritize some of the, you know, the smaller things that we can get more done as opposed to one big, you know, especially since we know that we have higher elected support for that initiative when times are normal. So, I mean, it's not like that money necessarily dries up next year. It might, it just means that we have to delay it a year.
So personally, I like that approach. I like the way you're thinking with that, Matt. Because there were a lot of things that need to have attention on the, you know, the, what you just presented to us. And I know Ben, getting, you know, those restrooms over at Island Park is huge because, you know, they haven't been functioning, you know, at all, or at least halfway. And so I think that, you know, that would be my vote to go in that direction.
The low hanging fruit scenario?
Yeah, and then, you know, speaking of that, so I haven't been to Island Park recently, but what, what kind of shape is that place set in? Is that still something that we're okay with leaving up for another season as far as, you know, from a safety point?
Ben?
It's, it's not in any, in any way dangerous. It's not ideal.
Not worse now than it was yesterday.
Right, thank you. It hasn't degraded over the winter in any way that I, I, I would let my child play on it, I'll be honest. That's a, if that's a measure for anybody.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, because I, I haven't been over there, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're okay going into the summer season with, with that being open. And I know we had that repair last year on the place that it's south long. And so that should be in good condition for this year as well, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we went through it a few weeks ago, and when the swings went up, just make sure that there were no, nothing loose. And it's dynamic, you know, and, and well, and nobody's been using it in theory, so.
Right.
It should not have degraded any further than it was when we saw it about a month or so ago.
Alright.
Okay.
So, Matt, do you, are you okay with, you know, do you want to leave this, because there was a lot in, in this master plan? Do you want to leave this public hearing open and?
Oh yeah, no, I think so. We, we gotta get all this up online and, you know, you know, let people weigh in.
Yep.
This was, you know, unfortunately, this was, would have been a lot better as a bigger splash in person when the bee could be like, hey, look at what the village is doing, and now it's kind of like, so, you know, being presented sort of digitally and remotely.
Yeah.
It's a, it's overshadowed at this point.
Nice pun there.
What's that?
You said make a bigger splash.
Ah, yeah.
And overshadow it.
Yeah.
Well, we have to learn how to deal with our current situation and make a big splash with it, so.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yep.
Somehow, some way, get it out there. It's a great idea, Matt. Very, very well done, and I look forward to making it happen.
Yeah, you spent a lot of time on that, Matt.
Well, not, not me, I mean, well, yes, me, but, but, you know, the Parks, the Parks Committee is the one who, who, you know, deserves the, the credit here. I mean, they, they put in long, long hours. The Guidance Document alone is, is hundreds of man-hours of effort.
Yeah, they've been, they've really, they've really become active.
Yes.
Which is welcomed.
Yes. Well, when I, when I became their liaison, you know, two and a half years ago, the comment was, you know, we don't have any, we don't really do anything. And we, you know, the projects are being done around us. We're not involved, we're not being consulted. So all we have to do is come here once a month and complain about what DPW didn't get done last month. You know, and I said, what's that? That still happens. That still happens, but now they've got a broader focus. So, you know, so the point is, is that, you know, I said, well, then let's, let's get you working on a project. I mean, this is something that's been languishing for 11 years.
Good. Well, thank you for all your work. That was, and the Parks Committee as well, that was, that was a home run.
Glad you liked it.
Okay, so we will just, for this evening, we'll continue the, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for the proposed Parks Master Plan and Guidance Documents, which will continue on May 26th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, so that closes, or at least covers our public hearings for this evening. And I will then go into the suspension of rules for public participation. If you have a comment or question on something as it relates to the village, you would please state your name and address, and I'll make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
Jordan has some comments.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Hey, first of all, just wanted to say thanks to DPW. The baseball diamond looks really nice. I know that, you know, I think they just raked it or something, but pulled all the plants out and kind of cleaned it up, so it at least looks really nice. And the tennis wall, whoever put that up, Ben, I watched them do it in the snow from my home office and then paint it that one day that we had the snow going on too. So really appreciate you guys cleaning that up. Just had a couple of like low hanging items that I wanted to draw to Ben and the Village Board's attention. There's a no parking sign that Natali pulled down just laying on the side of the road of California. I'm not sure if we could just have somebody pick that up so it doesn't go missing or end up through a windshield or something like that. I know Williamsville's, you know, super safe community, but everyone's out just bored looking for things directly lately, it feels like. There's also one of the no smoking signs that's just laying down along the path in South Long next to the concrete barrier for International Chimney. If somebody could just pick that up and either stand it back up or just hold on to it until we have a chance to install it properly. There's a piece of wooden trim that the kids started like ripping off the gazebo in South Long. It's on the side that faces the playground. If somebody from DPW could just tack it back up, it's kind of one of those things where when stuff starts getting pulled apart, then they just keep pulling it apart. And I think I noticed too that one of the glass block bat, windows on the South Long bathroom got smashed, which is really unfortunate, as well as the outlet cover box on the South Long bathroom. So just a couple of minor points there. And then I just wanted to ask Deb about Captain Brown's feedback for the, for the basketball court. It was pretty, pretty unnerving situation. So just for the board's benefit and everyone who's on the call, basically it was a Sunday night. There were, I would say, 10 to 20 people that showed up with video cameras on tripods, you know, a trampoline, and they had a Chrysler 300M ivory in color with rims pulled onto the basketball court with all four doors open with extremely loud music playing for more than two hours from at least 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Someone did call Amherst PD, APD. APD did show up, but honestly, I felt like the officer was intimidated by the number of people that were at the basketball court. The car was not moved and the music was not turned down, so I guess that was a question was like, are there any noise ordinances about that? I read through the code like I included in my email. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about asking someone to turn their car stereo down when it's that loud, but I mean, you could hear it from Kyuga if you were listening for it, and it was on the South Long basketball court, so we're not talking about quiet music. Another resident must have called because Amherst did come, but then they left. Didn't seem like, you know, they didn't really seem to be impacted at all. And then I guess like my next question is, you know, about that camera that we had installed. If that was paid for with Village Dollars, I'd like to know if, if, you know, I came to a meeting and asked about it, I was told that it can't see my property or my neighbor's property, but that it can see the park. That the Village Board members have access to it, and so does the Amherst Police Department. So if someone could just take it with letting Captain Brown know that that footage should be available. I don't know how long we keep it for. And any, if, if any of the Village Board members wanted to look at it, it happened last week, Sunday, so not yesterday, but we go Sunday right around 9:00 PM. I could pinpoint it for you if you want me to. So just looking for some feedback, I guess, Deb, on, you know, if we're going to try and hold these people accountable, what the purpose of that camera is, if we're not going to hold these people accountable?
So, I, I did see the video. I had asked Al to send it to me, the video that you had shot. And I sent that to Captain Brown after our conversation. And, you know, basically, when I, when I called him, I, I wanted twofold. I just, I wanted him to be aware of what had happened and told him that I would follow up by sending him the video, which I did. And then, secondly, I was a bit puzzled why, if that was indeed what was happening, why an officer would have just shown up and just walked away, and it was kind of business as usual then. So like, nothing happened from the officer's arrival. So, you know, he was going to have to look into, you know, who the responding officer was. And, you know, my, my indication, you know, of our conversation was that we would, you know, touch base, you know, at some point after the fact, because, you know, in my mind, I mean, it's already been done, so you know, as far as holding people accountable, you know, it's really, you know, when, when APD is, you know, comes to any situation, they're really the ones who have to handle it. As mayor, I can simply, you know, make a phone call and question as to why something was or wasn't done or handled the way it was or wasn't handled. But beyond that, I don't, you know, I don't know as though I have any other real like pull, if you will, to get anything done at this point about it.
Sure, I just wanted to know, I guess, to be more specific about my question, if the, if we could direct Officer Brown's attention, and also if any of the board members, because that's my understanding, is that that camera is accessible by all of you also, to see if it's on that camera that's on that pole.
So I, I have never accessed a camera on village property, and I wouldn't even know where to begin to access it, so I don't have that type of.
Do you know which camera I'm referring to?
May I speak here? That, that camera is accessible to the Amherst Police. They have it, and it will, they have it stored for months at a time. The only other place that it's accessible is in Judy's office that has a, the ability to rewind. I can watch them live. I do not have the ability to go back in time. So, and that, that, there is absolutely the, a perspective on the basketball court. So that is something that can be retrieved. If you say it was a week ago, I, this is the first I'm hearing of this.
Me too.
I had no idea that this went down. It's amazing how some things don't get relayed to us. And we can go back and find it. And if, I, for what purpose, I'm not quite sure, but yes, we can access it. The Village Board members do not have direct access to it. It is the administrator, the village of Williamsville, and myself, and.
I just want to say, I mean, the reason, you know, the reason it wasn't relayed to you, Ben, or Judy, or, or Chip, or Keaton, because quite honestly, it was an issue for APD to handle. So, you know, as a Village Board member, Al was first notified of it, and then he called me. And, and, you know, I reached out to Captain Brown, which is my role, you know, as a board member. But beyond that, I, I'm not sure what the ask is here for us to do. I mean, I, all I can do is simply call and ask a question and try to get some more information. But, you know, I, my, my role isn't to police, that's APD's role, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking that you, I guess what I'm specifically asking is that we remind Amherst that, and Ben just clarified, that if that camera has a view of the basketball court, so you were saying that you were sending the, the video that was available, but there should be another view available for the police, so just reminding Captain Brown that we have that camera there because it's relatively new. That's all I'm asking for, Deb.
Oh sure, well, that, that's an easy thing to do, absolutely. But, I mean, beyond that, I did send him the video that you had shot, so I think, you know, he could see firsthand, because I could see, see it certainly firsthand by watching the video. But, you know, I, you know, it was just more of a time saver, just texting it to him than saying,
Yeah, sure.
You know, hey, go, go check out this video. I mean, I don't know how quickly or if that even would have happened, honestly. You know.
I guess, I mean, so it sounds like.
Too, it takes in, you know, nobody was hurt at the, at this incident, you know, it was.
Yeah, thank, thank God, right?
As you know, yeah, I mean, but.
I mean, because a village resident is the one that confronted them and stopped it because APD didn't, and that's kind of, and why was it stopped? You know, I'm just, I mean, I was extremely intimidated. I'm sure you would be too. And I shouldn't feel that way, and I'm not saying that that's the Villa, I, I appreciate what you're doing, Deb, and I feel that you did do everything that you can. I'm just encouraging the board to continue to hold APD accountable for, you know, like, we pay taxes and pay for a police department also. We should feel safe on Sunday evenings walking in our parks. And I, I mean, now that you identified Captain Brown, like, I don't know if that's the guy that normally attends the village meetings, and I think I try and do things diplomatically, like I said. So I will also reach out to him and just say, hey, this is, if you're looking for more facts, you know, I, I'm not trying to be like a fly in the ointment. I'm just trying to get the services that I pay for and feel safe walking my dog on a Sunday night through a park.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and, and we should all, we all have that right to feel safe when we're walking through the village.
I mean, I guess the question that I have, you know, maybe to Deb is, should we basically reach back out to him based on what Jordan is saying and remind them that there is footage, and if we want to, if we care to press charges for what they did, because the, the first officer that came didn't see what happened, so that was really after the fact. But now there's, if it's on that footage, then we should push them to press charges, because we want to discourage this from happening again, because what's going to, I mean, they didn't get in trouble at all. So they feel like they can come back.
So I would have to defer to Chip for, like, what do you mean, press charges?
We damaged the basketball court. There's tire, they ripped up, you're just talking about how great that surface is earlier in this meeting, and now they ruined it. It's not ruined, the whole court's not ruined. I'm not suggesting that. I mean, it's two small tire marks, but they damaged the property. And if they can be identified, then why, why should residents pay for things if we could hold people that aren't even village residents accountable for damaging our property?
Yeah, I, I mean, if they damaged village property and the, and they committed a crime, we could certainly press charges. Just like any other property owner, but.
How is it that the police?
They're gonna need to investigate it.
How did they not make a report on a vehicle parked on a, a basketball? I mean, how?
If you, if you, I honestly, Ben, I'll speak because I'm a, a public citizen and not a board member. I think the officer was intimidated by the number of people that were there.
That's baloney.
I agree, but I, I, I watched the whole thing happen, and that's what appeared to happen to me, because I can't think of any other reason why you wouldn't ask someone to turn their music down or get their car off a basketball court.
Or take their license plate down.
And, and that's what I'm looking for from the camera.
You'd be hard pressed to probably find the resolution. They or may not be there, but the responding officer should have taken the license plate number and, and gotten a license. And that, that is, that is the failure of what happened there, in my opinion. So, that's all I got. I'm not a resident, but if it were in my backyard, I'd be livid as well.
So then on the, I mean, unless anybody has other comments on that, I just, I just, I don't want damage to continue to happen. I've seen two instances at South Long Park. The other one was the banging on the, you know, section house with the aluminum baseball bat that, again, Amherst basically didn't care about, told Al it was his problem. I didn't even call them with this incident or the, the previous incident, because I just, I'm, I feel exhausted with their response, even though that's exactly what, I don't know if it's Officer Brown who attends every meeting, but that's what we've been told to do at previous board meetings. So on the section house, I just didn't know if we could ask Natali to close the man gate and that vehicle gate each night when they leave. That's a, just a question, I guess, to try and cut down on the number of people that are just wandering back there. Some guy rode his motorcycle through the other day, so can we ask them? I don't know if there's anything that requests that they close that gate, but they still have a gate there. Can they close it at the end of the day? And then the other question I had is, you know, can they not park, at least leave the? And then the other question I had is, you know, uh, can they not park, at least leave the heavy equipment parked on the road overnight on California? I know that's probably coming to a close, but they shouldn't be leaving bulldozers on streets that we just paved.
We didn't pave it.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
We paved, we did not pave for that exact reason, that we knew that there would be construction there. They were doing a road crossing uh for a storm sewer and that that is just about done. I think I mentioned earlier that there's a lot of unexpected obstacles um that they've encountered. So and I'm not gonna make excuses of the contractor, but um that, as you suggested, it will be coming to an end here shortly.
Yeah, and again, just pushing the board to hold them accountable and, you know, as if they damage things, if we have the ability to hold them accountable for damage that they cause, you know, driving heavy equipment with metal tracks on the section of Milton that we just paved, shooting rocks into people's front yards, you know. To the extent that we can hold them accountable, I would appreciate it if we stayed on top of them. And, you know, I sent the email about running the generator overnight with the pump and Amherst's, you know, lack of responsiveness to that. Despite, you know, waiting till eleven o'clock, which is the noise ordinance, and then calling back at midnight and being told, you know, basically like, well, we're busy now, so, you know. I I'm just, I understand, and I'm not saying that the village board isn't doing what they can. I'm just asking you to continue to pressure them and hold them accountable. And if they damage things that taxpayers have to pay for, we should get them to pay for that before they just, you know, finish this whole project up and everything else. Thanks.
Thanks, Jordan.
Anyone have any other, like, comments to Jordan's comments, any input or thoughts or?
No, thank you for identifying the deficiencies in South Long Park. We'll we will get on that in.
Yeah, I know you guys work hard, Ben. I appreciate it.
It it's every other day, uh, five at a time until Monday. So it's it's difficult to uh get everything else done with that kind of staffing. We'll see what next week brings us.
Yep. Okay. Well, thanks, Jordan. I appreciate your comments and I'm I'm going to follow up with Captain Brown and um see if I can't get some more information on the status of of that report or non-report, whatever that is, so.
Great, thanks.
Anyone, uh, anyone else? Keaton at one?
Yeah, yeah, Deb, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, sure.
Uh, Nick Roth.
Yeah, thank you, Keaton. Uh, Nick Roth, one for thirty-five Oak Grove. Uh, initially, I want to apologize for my faux pas when uh I'm not a tech wizard and my best day, I could not hook two devices to a Bluetooth, but I managed to do it. So again, I uh apologize for that. I want to thank the board for the work on its budget. I know it was a very difficult process and I appreciate Trusty Yates's uh comments earlier tonight during work session that you're looking for additional ways to trim the budget. Um, I understand that we, the village is has or it possibly has completed a transition of the water department over to Erie County. And I'm just curious with the sewer system, is there a plan to transfer some of the responsibility for what we absorb now to either the town of Amherst or Erie County? I thought I had heard that at some point, but I I just can't remember.
Ben, do you want to address that about the sewer work that needs to be done?
Did everybody else hear what he said? I lost an after sewer.
Well, it it's a conversation we've been having for some time about the transfer of the village sewer system to Amherst. That is a conversation we we are having with the town. It hasn't happened, we haven't had that conversation in some months. Uh, before we are able to transfer our system, we need to fix our system. Um, and that's been identified as a six and a half million dollar endeavor. And we are in the 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 budget this year has identified the engineering costs to uh start fixing our system. I don't, I don't foresee us transferring that system anytime soon. I'll be perfectly honest.
Okay. I I would suspect possibly uh that six million dollar lift, is that something that could be bondable to be paid over?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yeah, that that bond resolution was passed months ago, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, I I noted in the uh last week's edition of the B that Judy let uh uh is requesting bids for paving and I um uh exchanged emails with Keaton earlier today. And Ben, you may recall, uh, we've had a couple of conversations that there's no uh storm receiver in the vicinity of our home on Oak Grove. And when we get heavy range, we get literally get a small stream coming down our driveway, uh, which sometimes under heavy range can destroy the lawn a little bit. So I'm curious, I know that Oak Grove is scheduled to be repaved. If that situation of uh of adding a storm drain were needed, is is going to be addressed?
Yes. I'm sorry, Nick, but um it was not in the plans for this particular paving episode. I'm going to, I I was there today watching the rain run down. Um, I know exactly where we should put a receiver. So was it budgeted? No. Do we have storm water funds that we can put towards that? Yes. Is it the right thing to do? Yes. So I'm gonna say with about a fifty percent confidence that it will get done.
Okay, thank you.
Not the answer you want to hear, uh, but that that's my honest response to you. And if it doesn't get done with this particular paving project, it's it's, we we can do it after. It's it's just a mill and pave. It's not like we're doing a a wholesale reconstruction of of Oak Grove. So it's 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 on the radar now. Let's put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
That's my best yes, no answer I can give you.
You're an honest man. I appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, good night.
Anyone, um, anyone else who wants a um has a question?
It appears to be everybody.
Okay, so um I will make a motion then to close the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Second.
Okay, so um we'll get to our reports and resolutions and Keaton, you want it, can you pull those up on the screen? Okay, so I will make a a resolution to approve resolution number one, which involves payroll and vouchers. And resolution number two, which involves um the sewer O and M, there was a rate change just on an error on previous calculations. So I'll make a motion to approve those, does they appear in the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion now to go off agenda to add a resolution involving a Department of Public Works employee. So, second, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, resolved that light duty is hereby approved for David Klein for the period through August twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Question, question on that. Ben, what happened to him?
Uh, he's, uh, hold on, hold on, let me, hold on, hold on, hold on. Am I on? Okay. Uh, he had a a back injury, a previous back injury that flared up. It's from a previous employment, nothing that happened here. And that's, that's it.
Okay.
He's been receiving treatment for some time. Um, feels good, but the doctor wants to keep him on light duty and and we have been.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I have no reports.
Return to regular agenda.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to return to regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so next for his reports and resolutions is Deputy Mayor Tiaza.
I believe mine is not going to be carried to tonight. We're setting, saying it back. And um I really don't have any specific report, so I'll just pass and let the next person delegate.
Okay, so next for his reports and resolutions is Trusty Yates.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't have any resolutions tonight, but um just wanted to think on my beautification committee. They've been hard at work on our uh parks and places that they take care of, so they've done a lot of great work and I think the guys have been picking up the the bags and everything. That committee is also uh also somewhat in charge of the garden walk. And the garden walk, they've decided they're gonna do a virtual garden walk this year um in light of COVID. So um we'll continue to work with that and figure out how we want to do that for this year. Um, trees, uh, worked with Ben and the um chairperson, Dan Delano. We're all gonna do some street tree planting this year, um, that was already planned and budgeted for in the current budget cycle. So that should start soon. I think Ben is gonna be ordering the trees here soon. Um, we talked about W B A earlier, so we're, you know, Keaton and myself will continue to work with W B A to see what we can do to help our local businesses in any way that we can. And I think that's all I have committee wise, because the E A C has not met. So um there's nothing to really to report or any updates on E A C. So that's all I've got for now. Good night, everybody.
Okay, um, next for his reports and resolutions is Trusty E two.
Uh, reports tonight, I already did the parks thing and again, I expressed my gratitude to the Parks Committee. They really put in uh Yeoman's effort on the guidance document and the Parks Master Plan. Look forward to executing that. Uh, with regards to my other three committees, I'm not allowed to talk to them or about them, so um. Moving right along. Um, I will say this, I will, one comment. Uh, I want to uh express my gratitude to Mr. De Priest, who I think has been doing just an absolutely spectacular job of uh managing all of these meetings and hosting, you know, playing host to all these Zoom meetings for all the committees and managing all the documentation, communications with everyone. He's he's really quite the center of the wagon wheel there, so good job, Keaton.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Attaboy.
So my one resolution uh is that the village administrator is hereby authorized to publish a notice of public hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Williamsville on Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty P M in Village Hall, fifty-five sixty-five Main Street, Williamsville, New York, for the purpose of hearing all persons interested in discussing the thirteen proposed local landmarks. Is it thirteen or twelve?
It, when you count it out, there's actually thirteen.
Okay, thirteen proposed local landmarks as recommended by the Village of Williamsville Historic Preservation Commission. This refers specifically to the, you know, any sort of stone wall or other type, you know, landscape element that was identified in the survey.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
And next for his reports and resolutions is Trusty Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As opposed to reports, um, the Glen Park Drive Board has not met due to everything that's going on with COVID. Um, same thing with Youth and Rec. Um, we haven't had any meetings, so I think you report for them. I do, I thank Trusty E two for his presentation tonight in the Parks Committee. They did a great job. Looking forward to seeing what everything's gonna happen the next upcoming years. And also, um, thank you to Ben and D P W, except they picked up a TV that I've had in my garage for a while today. So finally got rid of it. Um, so so that's all um reports I had tonight. I'm doing one resolution. It is resolved that the purpose proposed amounts, check our one oh three, vehicles and traffic of the village code to clarify parking enforcement on private property that was subject to public hearing on Monday, March ninth, twenty twenty. It's hereby adopted as Local Law four twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you all. And moving into staff reports, Administrator Kindren.
I don't have anything tonight.
Community Development Director De Priest.
I don't have anything other than, um, I I assume, I can't get a sense of uh what it feels like to uh have your identity stolen, but this meeting's identity was definitely stolen for a matter of a couple of minutes. That was weird, so.
I failed.
Definitely something to look out for. Um, I mean, it it's just one of those chances we take by allowing the meeting ID in the password or whatever to be accessible to the public. You know, there there was.
Around it, you know.
Yeah, well, we, right. I mean, unfortunately, because these are public meetings, we obviously have to make that available to the public. I don't know if Keaton, and I'm not sure this would even solve the problem, but I don't know whether you're using the waiting room feature, but but, I mean, I'm just, what's that?
They had, uh, they had regular names. There was a guy named Dale that came in.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem. If they you, there's no way of knowing whether they're using real names or not, so I don't know. We may have to give this some thought. I mean, it is being recorded. And I I do wonder whether, I mean, I think some of those things that were on there are, you know, not just inappropriate, but there were disturbing things on there that that we we may want to actually ask A P D to look at the video of this meeting to. I I don't know if they're dealing with this with other um things, but but.
Should we?
I was, those comments were very disturbing. So I I think like the first thing I'll be ordering from Amazon tomorrow is a bulletproof vest. So uh, can can I build that to the village? Meetings are gonna get like that, I mean, I.
COVID expense are reversible.
Is it, do you think it's possible, Chip, to put like a time cap on when we allow people to come in?
Yeah, I don't know. These are, you know, because of this is, we we knew this was a possibility, but this is the first time it's happened, so. Yeah, we'll we'll have to give that a little bit of thought. Um, because, yeah, it's just how do, how do we know? I mean, once they're in, they can do what they're doing until you kick them out. It's and
Exactly.
And and how do we legally decide who can come in and who cannot come in? I I mean, it's it's it's, um, we're just gonna have to give that some some thought.
I might be.
Why is the police watching this now, live for that very reason?
I haven't, I have told them uh that we're gonna hold our Zoom meetings. Um, I I don't know if they have uh other matters going on. I I haven't alerted them to uh the last two specifically, but I told them that every other week on a regular scheduled meeting night, we will be holding Zoom meetings, so.
So so and I, when I had, um, Captain Brown had offered to be in on all of our Zoom meetings, but I told him I didn't think it was necessary, so that's why he's not on here or a representative from A P D isn't. So, um, you know, I think, um, you know, I I don't know, how does the board feel about that? Do you want, um, do you want A P D on these meetings or?
I mean, I think it might, it might, if they're willing to do it. I mean, the the thing is, I think it might discourage people from doing what happened tonight.
They they've got guys at at the deep, at the department who can just put this on and let it ride in the background. And if something like that happens, they can, they can stick them. I mean, they can hop on it and figure out what's going on. They have very good I T defense uh opportunities or abilities, so I I think it's a good idea.
I think there is a way, Keaton. Um, you may reach out to Julie because she does all the town meetings. And so she'll let people in when she wants, because she has to moderate a lot of those, especially when there's a press release. And so there, I think there could be a way.
Yeah, I let, you know, I, the the person named Dale came in and there were two others that came in almost like a minute of each other. And I said to myself, I said, you know, well, it's a little wait, a little late, but they were in the waiting room. And I was like, you know what? It's public expression time. Allow them to come in. Maybe they're just, I don't know, maybe they got home from work late. You know, I gave the benefit of the doubt and that ended up being it, you know? And then um there were just a whole slew of them that were in the waiting room. So I had to remove those from the waiting room while also removing the ones that had gotten in and infiltrated and started doing obscene gestures and talking, so.
So I, Keaton, so I think what you you could do um is, could you forward? So where this is being recorded, so could you forward that over to Craig Johnson tomorrow? And and just, you know, they'll be able to see it and, you know, if there's any way that um, you know, they could, uh, you know, trace that or, um, you know, maybe perhaps be on our next Zoom meeting call, because I feel now that it's it's happened once, I think it's, they're probably gonna be. I think it's, they're probably going to be looking around for the next board meeting as well. So maybe just run it by them and see what their suggestions are about how we should handle it.
Okay, sounds good. I mean, at the least it's a catalyst for them to be, to have a presence at the next meeting, so.
We've had some issues that should be resolved by the Town of Bampers Police tonight.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. That's all I had for my comments.
Right, Attorney Greco?
Nothing, nothing else for me.
Okay. Crew Chief Villanen?
No, I think I've said enough.
There's no such thing.
No, we're just, like I said, we're going to start up Monday full crew. Again, pending any other decisions, you know, depending, a lot can change in four days as we've, we've learned. We're doing brush and metal and everything else every other week and starting to, actually, the one question I do have is, should I start getting guys in for parks? That was a question, and opening up the bathrooms.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, all right. We'll schedule the water turn on and we'll have the Island Park handicap and women's bathroom. The men's room is going to lag a little bit and South Long will be turned on.
Okay, so while we're on parks, kind of the white elephant in the room, what, what are we doing or not doing with swings at Garrison Park? Do we have them up?
No.
No, okay. I'm just, I'm asking, I mean, I, because it's.
I mean, we got them up and then we, we didn't and then we, you're not allowed to be on the swing sets or on the park equipment. You want them up, we can put them up. You tell me.
I think.
What's that?
I think you have to put them up. And if people use them, that's their choice. But. You gotta, you gotta, I mean, it's the same reason we're not entertaining the idea of closing Glen Park Avenue. I mean, you know, people have to be smart about it for themselves and be responsible for themselves. They.
Yeah, I see people on the park, on the swings, you know. People are going to use them. All right, we can throw them up there.
Okay.
For the bathrooms, do we want to put any kind of signs saying that they're not sterilized on a daily basis? Or anything? That, I mean, because that's, that's a place that, I don't know. I personally wouldn't use a public bathroom at this point.
The, I think we should, from that perspective, we should take our cues from the state. I mean, the state parks are open, but the state park bathrooms are not.
Right.
So you're thinking we should keep ours closed then too?
That's what I think.
Yeah, I mean, probably. And just.
Then raises the question, should we be bringing in our porta potties?
No.
No, it's the same thing. What's the difference?
We may have a problem when we get down to the farmer's market opening if we don't have both, public bathrooms open in one area.
No.
I mean, there are, there are porta potties in the more rural areas like Letchworth and Allegheny and stuff like that. Right. Now, the, the established fixed brick and mortar bathrooms are locked, but the porta jones are accessible.
Which are then, you know, serviced by a company who then I assume takes the liability. I'm not quite sure how that works. Chip hasn't any idea on that.
It's the same thing as a construction site.
Right.
You know, I have been out to an essential construction site when the Honey Dipper was there and they are, you know, they're, they're going in there in full Tyvek with all the disinfectants and they're wiping everything down. They probably do that anyway, but.
So the question is then, you know, typically we get them for Garrison and Glen Park. Should we get porta potties for South Long and Island versus our brick and mortar or not?
That's, that's a large expense that we did not budget for.
Yep, that's the next breath. Yep.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't, what's the difference between a brick and mortar and a plastic one?
I think you'd see less people going into a plastic one than, I wouldn't go in any. That's me.
Well, I would go in if I had to and I'm just thinking of like the vendors that are going to be our farmers. They're going to be there at 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM setting up and they're going to be there till 2:00.
But what do they do, what do they do? They probably go into Island Park.
Island Park, yeah. So I'm not saying we open it tomorrow, but by the time the market rolls around, we're going to need something.
Which is, remind me Al, June 1st?
June 6th.
June 6th, yeah. Same as always, okay.
So I think, I think if we're, if we're going to have our parks open, which we are, I think we should just have the brick and mortar bathrooms open. I mean, I, you know, realize maybe the state is doing something different, but, you know, for, for our needs and for our village, I think that that is the, it works the best.
I second that.
I mean, I kind of somewhat see Judy's point, you know, should we have a sign made, put on the door, limiting it to one person? I know some of the bathrooms are one person, but due to distancing, should we just?
Most of the bathrooms are one person. I mean, there are two maybe at the moment.
The only one that's going to be available now that's two person is the women's room on Island Park.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
But if one person's in there, you're not going to know.
You walk in, you know, how do you know?
I just noticed when I stopped at the rest stop on my way to Virginia where I am now, today I had to stop at a rest stop and they had covered every other urinal in the men's restroom. So I could pull the bag off and pee in that one if I wanted to, but, you know, I don't want to touch it. So I guess it's the same thing, like more people. What's that?
You can pee on the side of the building too.
Right, exactly. So, so there is some response, you know, we have to take responsibility. It's more of less of saying, I guess, reminding people.
Well, couldn't we put a sign on the door and that says user assumes all risks or something?
That's what I'm saying, that these aren't cleaned and please, if there's someone in here, please wait outside to, I don't, I don't have the verbiage, but those two messages should be, you know, maybe printed and laminated and stuck on the door.
It never relieves us of liability, but a sign helps. The other practical issue is that it's really hard to get hand cleaning solution these days, so.
I have a solution for you.
It's going to be hard getting our, I mean, we may have to just use Buffalo Distilling, like that type of hand cleanser in the bathrooms for a while because I can't get the products that we usually use.
Here's what I did for the, the farmer's market. I mean, I got dispensers, but I went out to Uncle Jumbo's and they're selling gallon size of, it's 80% ethanol. And then I diluted it down to 60% just by volume, but I diluted it down with aloe vera gel that I bought from Whole Foods.
Yep.
So.
Well, I mean, the distillers and the wineries and all that, you can get hand sanitizer, just the dispensers are not. It's, it's minor, it's in the, we're in the weeds now, you know, y'all don't need to worry about that, but just run it.
I was just telling you, you can go to Uncle Jumbo's. It was, I forget what I paid for a gallon. It's still expensive, but.
30 bucks?
It was 30 or 40.
Yeah, Buffalo Distilling is 30 bucks a gallon.
Okay, that's better.
80%.
80%, okay.
That's what we got DPW right now in a hand pump.
Yeah, CDC says you just need 60% or both, so you could dilute it down.
I'm not going to, no. Unless you want to bring your lab equipment over and do it all, I'm not going to take that responsibility.
That's what I did in my kitchen. I set up my lab and diluted it down.
All right then, we'll schedule bathrooms to be opened.
Yep.
And.
Swings to go up?
Swings to go up.
We should be all set then, okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Treasurer Pasco, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything.
Did I, did I get everyone?
Yeah.
That went on my screen here.
All right, so, all right, we have no executive session and I think Izzy is on from the V. So Izzy, do you want to, do you have any questions for us before we adjourn?
Yep, I just want to double check. For the planning board, the law that you're going to vote on, on the 26th, it's not going to have the seven to five in it?
No.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct.
We're proposing. Now, we don't know if that'll pass if we get all the votes, but I would assume we would.
But we're, but the point is, is that the proposed law would be to hold it at seven persons.
That's correct, yes.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
It's more than the last two times, so that's something.
Did you get a really, the question is, did she get a really good Matt E2 quote or not?
Because if you just.
I haven't, I'm not feeling the love lately. I haven't been at the B, you know?
Well, you know what, E2, I mean, you got to, you got to up your material a little bit, I think, is what it comes down to. You know, I don't know.
Sorry, I'm just.
Well, there better be. Better be a front page expose on the parks for Wednesday.
Yeah, it was a really good presentation.
Yeah, it was. It was great.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Look to the future. Look to the future. Don't get stuck in the present.
Yeah.
And just, I want to say, Keaton, you have been doing a great job with all this. I wouldn't even know where to begin to, you know, get into Zoom. Thank you for bringing all this up and, you know, doing these meetings a new way.
Yeah, it's different, but, you know, it gets the job done, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
All we can do. And we're all learning.
Yes, we are.
We are.
And so I keep saying about, you know, when the farmer's market does open, it's going to be clunky, it's going to change. And we have no experience and we will probably fail at some things too, so, but.
Right.
Try to keep everybody safe and it is what it is.
Good attitude.
Now I'm working with the Elmwood Bidwell Market now and just getting their, their layout. They're going to stretch it out and put a lot of space between people, so.
That's kind of what we're doing.
Many more than just that one lot.
Yeah. When, when said opening, Ben?
The sixth as well.
Okay. What are you guys dealing with? You know, one of the things I think that we're dealing with now is, you know, if they don't, some of our vendors don't sell like food items, right? They're allowed to under COVID to sell like hand sanitizers, right? So the million dollar question becomes is, okay, well, they sell soap and hand sanitizer, so that item is acceptable. And, but if they also have lotions and potions that they make as well, should we restrict them and not allow them to bring it? And we've said to bring it because it's not creating an additional risk by them having their other stuff. And God knows, all our small businesses have been through enough with this, but I just was curious if you guys have had to deal with that too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So you're kind of in the same boat.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, personally, we're selling a lot more vegetables and herbs this year in addition to the plants that we usually have, so.
Yeah.
But I, you know, farmers markets is, unless something changed with respect to any of these executives, I mean, are essential, were identified as essential businesses.
For food.
They are for food, but if I have a vendor that just makes craft.
Oh, you're saying, okay. I see what you're saying.
If you're ornamental or flower grower, you know, something that you can't eat.
Right. So I think, I think our one flower grower, you know, she's going to bring, you know, fresh herbs that she's grown in her garden so that way she can be there. And I'm, me personally, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
You know?
Me too.
Yeah, Deb and I spoke about it because I think some, you know, our market managers that are trying to coordinate it, you know, they're trying to know, should, should they tell them they can come or not come? Or they can come, but they can't bring their other stuff. And I just said, it's not creating additional risk by them bringing the other product. If it were, then absolutely, I wouldn't even think about it.
Because the risk is in the gathering of people and that's what you need to.
Yeah.
Right. So that's what, that's what we're addressing and we're handling.
You deal with your line in front of the business, you know, that's, that's the main, that's the main risk.
Yeah.
So Chip, that, that market's going to go from Elmwood all the way to Soldier Circle or Colonial, Colonial Circle.
Perfect. It'll be closer to my house. Oh, all the way to Colonial Circle. Oh no, the wrong way.
Yeah, wrong way, yeah, but to Colonial.
Come towards soldiers.
Anyway, we can talk later. It's taking up your time. My battery's running out.
All right, so anyone have anything else, Keaton?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. You mentioned opening the bathrooms. Do you have like a possible date that you might know? Like, will they open by Monday or?
No, let me, let me get ahold of Water Authority and I'll let you know. I need to find out when they'll be able to put their, their crews out because they're running at 50% as well.
Okay.
That's coordination.
Sounds good.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night.
We need to make a motion to adjourn.
I didn't make that, did I? All right, I'll get to, all right, so I make a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See ya.
Good night.
They say.
Everybody.
Bye bye.
See you guys.
Bye bye.